Please welcome the brand-new Clippers forward, Kawhi Leonard.
We're here today to celebrate the extraordinary generosity of Kawhi Leonard and the LA Clippers for our children in Los Angeles, especially during this critical back-to-school time.
A backpack alone is a prized possession for any child, but for the children in our program who are homeless or in foster care, it means the world to them. It's not just every student at 107th Street and in Moreno Valley who will be getting a new backpack. Today, Kawhi and the Clippers are announcing they are also giving brand-new backpacks to every student in both LAUSD and the Inglewood Unified School District.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard, for being here, for believing in our scholars of 107th Street School, as well as the entire LAUSD. Having you provide all of the scholars with backpacks lets us know that you believe in us and that we matter.
The goal of mine of this year is being great on and off the court, and I felt like this was a great way to start. I know how hard it is for parents and students at the start of the year, so hopefully these backpacks are meaningful to the people that need them.
LADWP shines the light on power outages, a new online map makes it easier to find fun stuff to do, and city attorney Mike Fuer cracks down on people selling illegal pharmaceuticals. All this in City B. No more sitting in the dark when it comes to information on power outages. The LADWP now provides a 24/7 alert service to customers about major power outages for up to three neighborhoods. Get your notifications by text, emails, or both. City Controller Ron Galpern has released a new online map called "Summer Fun in LA" that highlights over 800 city-funded places to go and things to do in Los Angeles during the summer season. Find free or low-cost events at lacontroller.org/summerfun. LA City Attorney Mike Fuer has announced the filing of criminal charges against eight individuals for allegedly importing and selling 100,000 illegal and counterfeit pharmaceuticals. For a list of free and low-cost health clinics, visit lacityattorney.org/healthclinics. The Port of Los Angeles is awarding $1 million in grants to 30 local organizations under the port's community investment sponsorship program. The program, which is non-taxpayer-funded, gives out these grants to support education, community projects that focus on local workforce development, the environment, and on promoting the LA waterfront. The grants were put in the categories of small, medium, and large, with recipients of large grants including EXP for its "Preparing the Next Generation Workforce" program, the Los Angeles Maritime Institute for its "Top Sale Youth Program," and the Boys and Girls Club of the Los Angeles Harbor for its "Port Ocean and Land Awareness Program." They're the costumes that help tell the story, and you'll probably recognize some of them from your favorite TV shows. They were all on display at the Fashion Institute of Design as the museum celebrates the Emmy Award-nominated fashion.
We're here at the 13th Annual Art of Television Costume Design Exhibition at the Fashion Institute of Design and Merchandising, FIDM, in downtown Los Angeles. Right here, we have over 100 costumes from 23 featured shows, 10 of which are Emmy-nominated for Best Costume Design.
The museum, as it is now, was founded when we built this building for the college, and it's an adjunct to the college. And with Los Angeles being the home to Hollywood, where television and film really began and flourishes, we feel it's a very, very important part of our culture.
I'm thrilled to be included in the exhibit here at FIDM. It's a real occasion for costume design, and it's really wonderful to see some of my favorite shows here right next to my clothes.
The costumes just seem to get better and better as the years go on.
We, as costume designers, spend our days thinking about the pieces that are going to help tell the story. The pieces of clothing, or jewelry, or hats and shoes, and all those little things that we all put on every morning that we don't necessarily think about. But it's my job to think about them to help tell the story in a way that makes sense for the character. And ideally, if I'm doing it right, you'll never notice.
FIDM Museum is the gift to the community. We never charge admission. We do three major exhibitions a year. This is one of our very favorite ones.
What we love about here is that we have a variety of genres: period, fantasy, sci-fi, costumes, that really show the characters of who these people are in your favorite TV shows. So when you visit here, you get to see that. It's almost like you get to be part of your favorite TV shows.
We made a real effort to have the clothes be a way into the story.
We want to educate generations about costume, and ready-to-wear couture, film costume, TV costume, all types of costume, because it's so important to our heritage.
It's a chance to leave the kids at home and come play with the zoo animals yourself. Roaring Nights at the LA Zoo is one big party animal bash. Anna Marcos gets in on the fun.
This 8,000-pound elephant is ready to play ball to the delight of the audience. Roaring Nights at the LA Zoo have kicked off. It's kind of like a party for grown-ups who never outgrew their love of animals: the huge, or the sleek and predatory.
It was really cool. It was really cute.
It was playing with the box for a little bit, so that was really interesting to see. He was smaller than I expected, but...
Not very savage either, right?
No, no. No, he kind of sounded like, or he looked like a lazy house cat a bit.
Or how about something a bit hairier? Gorillas, anyone?
I can run pretty fast, but you know, I'm cognizant of the possibility. It could jump. It could make it. I think, I watch Animal Planet a lot. I think it could make it.
You think it could jump over that moose?
Well, you know, it might grab a limb or something. They swing.
Visitors get a front-row seat to feeding time for some of the animals. This little guy is willing to put on an entire show of tricks for a few mouthfuls of fish. And good hygiene is also important. This seal barters a toothbrush session for a chance at the tasty snacks. While this rescued sea lion may be blind, but he knows what it takes to get in on the feeding action. And apparently, some will even submit to entire medical exams, as long as you keep those treats coming.
Oh, they're so adorable. Personality.
And there's even a petting zoo for us big kids. This is a California king snake. Now, it looks harmless enough, but this is a constrictor. It can actually kill a rattlesnake.
We involve animals in every event that we do, so from land to sea, we offer a little taste of really special and popular animals here.
And the party's just getting started. Our zoo residents may be going to bed, but not these party animals. Dancing DJs, food trucks, and a full bar are all on the after-hours menu.
Animals are asleep. No animals.
Wait, what about the animals?
There's no animals. They're asleep. Even though it's a full mood, and we did go "Ooh."
I had some, you know, margaritas.
So this is a party for the big kids?
Yes, it's a party for the big kids, and it's been incredible.
I saw a snake and a turtle, and that's about it.
I love it. I love it. So I bring them around.
And your dancing?
Yes, we love it. Yes, we've been hitting every spot.
And if you're wondering why people on one of the dance floors are dancing in silence, well, it's the silent disco, of course. All the music you need is in those bright fluorescent headphones.
This is really a chance for LA guests to explore the intersection between music, culture, and nature. People have a perception, maybe, that the LA Zoo is just for kids, and it's really not. We throw a really good party here.
Somewhere, some animals must be wondering how they can sleep with all that racket.
There'll be one more Roaring Nights event this summer. On September 27th, you must be 21 to get in. For information or tickets, visit lazoo.org. We all know that summer wouldn't be the same without your pick of outdoor movies. In Echo Park, as the season comes to a close, folks came out to enjoy one last flick under the stars.
We do the annual Summer Movie Nights, and today, we are combining with Echo Park Rising, which is another annual event. And we have a theme of music all day, and it's going to lead up to the screening of "A Hard Day's Night," of course, with the Beatles. So we've been working with Comron and the organization and the entire community, so we would have a day-long celebration of music and culture here at Echo Park Lake. I have a deep love for all things Beatles. When I turned on my car this afternoon on my way to my first event, the song that came on from the very beginning was "A Hard Day's Night," and I thought, this bodes well.
It's our ninth annual event. It's been a labor of love. We're all volunteers, and it's a free festival for the entire community. Tonight is really a culmination of a long process of doing something together at the lake, and it's our family stage, and "A Hard Day's Night" is a great way to sort of come together. This is the 50th anniversary of Abbey Road, was, what, a week ago? A week and a half ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, which is a nice coincidence, and people can take their photo as if they're on Abbey Road.
It's the end of the summer, and it's just a good hang in the park. There's been some cool music. We just saw some tap dancers from the Tapalists, and they were crushing it up there. And, I don't know, it's a beautiful night.
What do you get when you mix confetti cannons with lots of kids and families? Well, a whole lot of summer fun at Chinatown Summer Nights.
We love the confetti cannons. This is the second time we've come here this summer. We love Chinatown Summer Nights. We've been coming for years, and the most fun is shooting off the confetti cannons. And my son, who's over there, loves to throw the confetti at my, he's throwing it at my father, who's in town.
What's so great about the confetti? Tell me.
We get jumping out of Paris.
Everybody's having a great time. It'll take us a week to get all the confetti out of our clothes.
If you love Stevie Wonder, join the celebration of his music at the Levitt Pavilion. Check out some vintage cars at a San Fernando car show. And in the mood for some jerk chicken? Well, don't miss this Jerk Fest. All this and things to do. Wonderful, the annual event dedicated to the musical genius of Stevie Wonder, is back. Enjoy a free daytime event for all ages, filled with dancing, food trucks, and live t-shirt screen printing. And of course, DJ Spinus spinning all Stevie exclusives, covers, samples, and remixes. Spend an afternoon among fellow Stevie lovers at Wonderful, happening Sunday, September 1st, beginning at 4:00 PM. To RSVP, visit concerts.levittlosangeles.org. Moonlight Customs proudly presents the first annual Moonlight Yak's inaugural car show. Bring your family and friends, food and beverages, folding chairs, and be ready to barbecue alongside many of your fellow car culture enthusiasts. Cruise on over to Moonlight Yak's inaugural car show, happening Saturday, August 31st, at Hanson Dan Recreation Center. For more information, check out their listing on Facebook Events. Jerk Fest is a cultural awareness festival that pitches tents at UCLA. Come out and experience delicious dishes like jerk chicken, jerk shrimp, yam, and other authentic island dishes. Not only do you have an opportunity to taste exotic foods from the Caribbean, but enjoy music from internationally renowned acts. Jerk Fest 2019 cooks up a great time on Saturday, August 31st, beginning at 12:00 noon. For ticket information, visit adamari.net. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityb.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Good morning, good morning. Today is Wednesday, August 28th. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to this council meeting. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscayino, Sadio, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Ruse, Smith, Wesson, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Krikorian moves. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Sadio moves, and Coretts seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, there are several requests. There is a request to continue item number 1 to September 11th, 2019.
So ordered.
And moving on, items 2 through 24 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to receive and file item number 4, sir.
Okay, we'll do that. Continue.
Sir, that requires a vote.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote on these items. Mr. O'Farrell?
Item 17, special.
Let's hold 17. Mr. Coretts?
Item 19, please.
Let's hold 19. Let's hold 4. Or, Mr. City Attorney, can we take care of 4 now?
Yes, there's a technical correction. The correct address for the park has a typo. It should be 20726 Wells Drive.
Okay, thank you. So let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, the committee report for item 19 has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration, but as being held special. And the ordinances for 2 and 3 will be continued to, one week to September 4th unless reconsidered with 12 members present. And, Mr. President, that takes council to items called special, public comment, or presentation, sir.
Mr. O'Farrell, did you want to send something forth with?
Item 15.
Item 15 forthwith. Item fifteen forthwith. Okay, let's, I'm gonna start out quickly with some general public comment. If I can get Marco Juarez, Ernie Barnes, Corey Schmidt, please come forward. Mr. Gus. Yes, Mr. Juarez.
Good morning, sir. My name is Marco Juarez, and since I've been here, I have this government code, section 54950 and 54963, Requesting Ralph and Embraun Act. And I would like to record to show, reflect my sure, states my opinion that this important message is on, and record, please. And also thus, again, I'm here to stop city inspectors and investigators' corruption. Already been all over to the city, Chief Robert Gallardi, Director Anna Ortega requesting help why the investigators keep harassing us, intimidating, retaliating, making threats. That's bullying to low-income families, disabled tenants, and under social security recipients. That's federal crime they've been committing. Why this investigator, Joseph Placencia, asking me why I don't pay enough rent? Do I need to pay more rent if not move to the building? That's illegal for disabled tenants, and also this criminal agency. Keep harassing us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming. Okay, next speaker. Mr. Gus, if you're ready, you can come on. Corey, if you're ready, you can come on. Mr. Herman, if you're ready, you can come on. Mr. Gus.
Councilmembers, final warning. Your press room is out of ADA compliance. If you don't fix it, you're gonna get sued. And it's not gonna be sued in small claims. It's gonna cost you hundreds of thousands of dollars. I've already had forty-two points of contact with all of you, and in smaller groups with you. You're gonna get sued for ADA violations if it's not remedied immediately. And Mr. Harris Dawson, everybody make note, Mr. Harris Dawson is grinning about that? We'll make note of that, sir. And by the way, Herb, I want parking, because I'm disabled, I've had two back surgeries. I want you to arrange parking for me to come to every council meeting, the same way yesterday, City Council, Mr. Spindler had free parking. And it seems to me, if you don't arrange free parking for me for every day, immediately after I sued you and won, that's retaliation on top of it. I will sue if you don't fix it this week.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Herman? Mr. Smith, Corey?
No, sir, it's Herman, for the record. For the record, 0950529, regarding item seventeen, public safety. Identifying Second Amendment, tracking firearms, seize and control, deny the American people the right to protect themselves from the hostility of discrimination and retaliatory attacks by local government. No council's action under Krikorian, who has a broken bar license, to report the ability to identify and track confiscated firearms in the city. How do I protect myself? How do I protect the American people from the inability of racial...
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Schmidt? And is there Mr. Barnes? Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. I mean, Mr. Herman. Mr. Schmidt, please come forward.
All right, Corey Schmidt, for the record. I only have a short amount of time, gonna make this quick. All right, so two firearms locked away. I already kinda talked about this in the committee. I think that we won't be able to enforce it because it abridges the Second Amendment, so I would caution that. I like the idea where you're going, but I think we also need to have it within reach in case anything happens. That's what they're there for. So, number three, in terms of appeals from the fire code, I know it's already been voted on, but I need to kinda get to the point that due process, something that I'm very much a fan of. Okay, firearms tracking, we'll get to number twenty-three, smart cities. Wanna say thank you for finally listening to me, and we'll have to sit down and figure this out. Okay, I have nine seconds. Park hours, sure. Valet zones, donations, for sure.
Thank you.
Come back for seventeen.
Okay, Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment for today, and multi-comment as well. Mr. Oferro, are you ready for your presentation? The floor is yours.
Colleagues, it is a real pleasure to stand here today with our Salvadoran and Central American brothers and sisters as we recognize Defisal on their twentieth anniversary of the Defisal Salvadoran Independence Day Parade and Festival, which will take place right here in the thirteenth council district. It's so quiet in here, how about a big round of applause for Defisal? Me siento honrado de reconocer el vigésimo aniversario del desfile y festival de la independencia salvadoreña en el distrito trece. Este desfile muestra las tradiciones y raíces culturales de la comunidad salvadoreña que contribuyen al rico tapiz multietnico de Los Angeles. Hoy más importante que nunca, queremos que apoyar nuestra comunidad centroamericana. Okay, it is really dead in here. Oscar Gill and Sylvia Gill, together with Nestor Molina, Irma Valencia, Cecile Gutierrez, Oscar Madrid, Max Mayorga, Oscar Beltran, and Giovanni Guevara, have organized the Defisal Parade and Festival, and have dedicated countless hours of work to make each parade and festival a yearly celebration of the Salvadoran and Latin American culture in California. Defisal is a nonprofit organization that contributes to the development of the Salvadoran community through promoting civic pride within their youth, and by providing educational, financial, and other community programs to Salvadorans in Los Angeles and El Salvador. For nineteen years, thousands of Latin Americans have assembled along Santa Monica Boulevard to view the parade with its floats, horses, music, princesses, and special guests along the route. This year, on its twentieth anniversary, the 2019 Defisal Salvadoran Independence Day Parade and Festival will take place Sunday, September 1st, at 10 o'clock a.m. This year, along Hollywood Boulevard, starting on Wilton Place, and heading eastbound to Vermont Avenue. Salvadorans, as a community, are committed to maintaining their traditions, customs, and spiritual roots that contribute to the rich multicultural tapestry of the city of Los Angeles. And as we all know, now more than ever, we need to support and celebrate our Central American brothers and sisters. We're just getting started really slow here today. That's okay. So I want to acknowledge and thank some folks who are really important to making this happen. Sandra Marisol Cruz, who is the interim consul of El Salvador in Los Angeles, Alejandro Latona, interim consul of El Salvador in L.A. also. And then the Defisal Salvadoran Independence Parade and Festival Committee, I mentioned, as I mentioned before, and including Elsie Gonzalez, the 2018-2019 Queen of the Defisal Festival, Maritza Munoz, the 2018-2019 Queen of Tourism, Beatriz Oriana, the 2018-2019 Queen of the Commerce, Alia Arispe, the 2019-2020 Queen of Defisal, Claudia Razdel, 2019-2020 Queen of Commerce, Alberto Gutierrez, Orgullo Salvadoriano, and Gustavo Septimo Orgullo Gotamalteco. That's a lot of royalty in here today. Now I'd like to bring my friend and the founder and president of Defisal forward to say a few words about this Sunday's parade.
Thank you, Mr. President, Evergueso. Members, the council members, thank you for inviting us, Mr. Ferro. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you together, the Salvadorian people. This is the people that support the city of L.A. We are angels. Well, 1999, we decided to form, when few people, to organize the Salvadorian Independence Parade. We have the Central America Parade. We needed the Salvadorian, we needed status in the city of Los Angeles. And we have it for the last twenty years. We start with former Jackie Goldberg, we stayed with two years with her, and the twelve years when Mr. Eddie Garcetti, and the rest, we have our friend, Mr. Ferro. And thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart, and bottom of the Salvadorian people, for you guys, the work together in this city. Mr. Sadio Gilbert, we stayed together. And that's why it be, L.A. has to be together. We are one million Salvadorians in this city, in California. And that's the time. And thank you for honors today, now yes, only for us, or for my person, or for the Salvadorian community. That's what we accept, the proclamations of Defisal. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Oferro, I'd like to recognize Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just so happy to join in the celebration. El Salvadorians make a tremendous contribution to the city and NCD9, so we really appreciate that camaraderie. In fact, I had an opportunity to travel to El Salvador, some of you know, a chance to experience the homeland, and maybe more appreciative of the history and the culture. And in fact, I was the grand marshal a couple of years ago of the parade. And so look forward to celebrating again, and congratulations on continued success.
So, Mr. Gill, thank you so much. You are definitely, the Salvadoran culture is just woven deeply into the fabric that is authentic Los Angeles. So, we want to thank the organization, the Salvadoran people, the incredible spirit of generosity that is just in the soul of the Salvadoran people. And like Mr. Price, I had the great honor of traveling to El Salvador some years back for the adoration of Oscar Romero. And what a memorable journey that was. But the journey continues right here in Los Angeles. And so therefore, I invite everyone to this incredible parade coming this Sunday, 10 o'clock, from Wilton to Vermont, on Hollywood Boulevard. We want to commend the Defisal Salvadoran Independence Day Parade and Festival on their twentieth anniversary, and we look so forward to sharing the beauty and the diverse cultural traditions of this wonderful community, and our fellow Angelinos as we celebrate this weekend. Felicidades, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oferro. I too want to recognize the beauty of our city, that we are a city that welcomes all, a city that embraces all cultures, and that's the Los Angeles that I love and know. I just want to share with you, a point of personal privilege, that the two of the most important positions in my office are held by El Salvadorians, both female Salvadorians, my chief of staff Jenny, and my district director Gabriela. So they are leading my district and here, the operations of City Hall. They lead with love, with passion, with commitment, and with faith, and that's what El Salvadorians represent, not only here in Los Angeles, but back home. So felicidades, how do you say, congratulations?
Gilbert? Mr. Sadio? Mr. Corretz, you wanna, was it seventeen or nineteen, Mr. Corretz? Mr. Paul Corretz? Calling on Mr. Corretz, it was, you held, was it nineteen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add the wording to the third resolve clause at the very end, the wording including Exhibit A submitted to the Plumb Committee on 8/2719.
Okay, then let's...
So, Mr. President, just for clarification, then what is before council is the Plumb Committee report as amended by Mr. Corretz's verbal motion, sir?
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. President, now that there are fourteen members present, would council like to reconsider items two and three, the ordinances, sir?
Okay, on those two items, members, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Now this, now let's actually vote on the items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Oferro, are you prepared to take up seventeen at this point? Okay, we're, Madam Clerk, item seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this item is a approval of a motion that directs the Los Angeles Police Department to begin more comprehensive tracking of weapons that are used in gun crime in the city of Los Angeles. And where I'm going with this is, I'm gonna take you back to the month of June, the Gilroy shooting, where a child of seven years old was shot and killed in a mass shooting that took place at the Garlic Festival. And he was killed with a variant of an AK-47 that was legally purchased in the state of Nevada. And we know that gun crime, very likely in the thousands, that occurs in Los Angeles, Los Angeles County, and of course, around the state of California. The weapon...
The weapons used in those gun crimes, by the thousands, come from other states other than California. We have pretty stringent gun safety laws, thanks to several members currently on this council, including Mr. Krikorian. We have really stringent gun safety laws in the city of Los Angeles, and we're working on more across the city and the state. But the fact remains that guns legally purchased from other states that have either lax or very little gun laws of any kind, states where there are no age restrictions, no background checks, no limits on magazine clips, no limits on the type of weapon you can legally purchase anywhere in that state, may go over state lines and are used in crimes that affect Angelinos, crimes that destroy families, that harm communities, and harm this city. So I think it is really important that we figure out a way to track those guns that are purchased legally in other states and used at the expense of all of Angelinos. And that's the spirit and intent of this motion, so that we can begin a database of what crimes were committed with firearms that were purchased legally in other states that just don't really care and that might be in the pocket of various gun rights organizations like the National Rifle Association that control those state legislatures, that often control the executive branch, and often control all elected officials or the majority of elected officials in those states. It's time that we do everything we can at the local level to combat that influence across the country. This will be a first step to that, because it could possibly lead to a legal case that the state can make based on the documented crimes that are committed right here in Los Angeles, in the state of California. So colleagues, I urge, and I vote for this very sensible, fair measure. It's not just the cost of life and well-being in our neighborhoods. The costs are in the billions of dollars when you go into medical care. So it's sensible, it is another way for us to continue leading the nation in sensible gun safety legislation, and I ask for your eye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I'm proud to second this motion. I want to applaud Mr. O'Farrell for bringing it forward. This is, this is much more than a symbolic effort. This has been, trace studies have been done in other cities, notably Chicago, and have demonstrated that a very significant number of guns used in crimes come from a very small number of dealers, sometimes legal dealers, sometimes dealers that operate around the edges of legality. And if we can identify who the bad apple dealers are, whether in California or elsewhere, then hopefully we can provide some real solutions for cutting off the spigot that continues to fill our streets with guns that are used in crime. So this is an important first step to take. It's also worth noting that the ATF, the federal agency that is charged with the task of helping us to combat guns on the streets, has not been a very willing partner in this effort. There are significant constraints on the use of federal data that the ATF imposes upon local government, and I think it would be much more helpful for the Los Angeles Police Department if we could use this data in a much more robust way to develop real policies, not just with the police department, but with this council as well, real policies that help to combat gun violence here. So I think this is an important first step, and I urge your eye vote.
All right, let's prepare to move forward. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That brings us where, Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and they are referred. Announcements, members? Any announcements? Mr. Buscayeno?
Thank you, colleagues, and those watching on Channel Thirty-Five and listening on council audio. You heard me yesterday about the excitement we have again. Fleet Week is here in Los Angeles on the L.A. waterfront, and tomorrow night at the downtown San Pedro Historic Core, we're going to be having a welcome party for all the service women and men who we're going to welcome officially. So it's going to be held tomorrow night from five to ten on Sixth Street in downtown San Pedro. All the ships are in, and we're really excited about having yet another Fleet Week here in Los Angeles along the L.A. waterfront in San Pedro and Wilmington. Thank you, colleagues.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, sorry, Mr. President, we finished a little more quickly than expected, but I wanted to ask if we could reconsider Item Number Eight from yesterday's agenda, Council File Twelve dash one six eight one dash S one and Twelve dash one six eight one dash S three, the ordinance relating to neighborhood councils. I'd like to ask that we reconsider that and place it on the council agenda for September third for further consideration.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, at this point, we just vote on reconsideration and then we'll agendize it? Is that the way?
Yes, sir. So first vote is reconsider, and that would be clarification again. Council File One Two dash sixteen eighty-one S one, as well as Twelve sixteen eighty-one S three.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now, can we place that on, I believe it was the September third?
Tuesday, yes, sir.
All right, okay. Announcements, Mr. Price?
Mr. President, members, as a crowd of nearly two hundred and fifty thousand people gathered outside the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, D.C., Reverend Martin Luther King spoke these historic words, "I have a dream." That was today in nineteen sixty-three. His pivotal speech not only helped bring the civil rights movement even more to the forefront, it also pressured Congress to pass the Civil Rights Act, which they did the following year. The March on Washington was a revolutionary event at the time. People came from all over the country to attend. Even now, a half a century later, King's "I Have a Dream" speech and the March on Washington continue to resonate, and the speech continues to represent a significant moment in history. A panel of scholars in nineteen ninety-nine ranked the best speeches of the twentieth century. They put King's speech number one, ahead of Kennedy's nineteen sixty-one speech, "Ask Not What Your Country Can Do For You," inaugural address. Today, members, we honor a great man and a great speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Sadio?
Let me echo those comments, and also note another significant day in the history of this city and this county. August twenty-ninth, nineteen seventy, young Mexican-Americans took to the streets to protest the disproportionate deaths and fatalities of the Vietnam War. They were protesting the war, but their point of contention was that while under five percent of the population, they were close to twenty-five percent of the fatalities. And so they took to the streets and marched from a county facility on Third Street, down Atlantic Boulevard, down Huidier Boulevard, and convened peacefully at what was then called Laguna Park. For whatever reason, this gathering of twenty-five thousand Mexican-Americans, called Chicanos at the time, were assaulted and beat by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department and the Los Angeles Police Department. It resulted in a handful of deaths. Most noteworthy was the death of L.A. Times columnist Rubens Al Asad, and he was also the general manager of what soon became Univision, then at the time, K-M-E-X. He was a leader, an outspoken spokesperson for the Mexican-American community, and he was killed at the Silver Dollar Cafe on Huidier Boulevard. We are now reaching a, close to fifty years since that event, and I think it's noteworthy to note that, inspired by the dream of Martin Luther King, young Mexican-Americans took to the streets to advocate for their rights and government policy, and government reaction resulted in their deaths and brutalities here in the county of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Any additional announcements? Then if we could all rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to my right side. Mr. O'Farrell? Looking to my right side, I don't see any on the right. I'm looking to my left side. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Frank Avila, Sr. At the time of his passing, Frank was a supervisor for Wreckin' Parks for the city of Los Angeles and was a huge part of many improvements, including pools, skate parks, and vital repairs to parks throughout the city. Projects he worked on include the Alcacheno Aerial Playground, the Alcacheno Park, Hollenbeck Park, Ross Valencia Park, and Eagle Rock Park. He rose up the ranks due to his hard work and diligence, and always followed up with my staff as he went above and beyond to ensure that our parks were safe and clean for our kids and families. A longtime resident of Alcacheno and a graduate of Woodrow Wilson High School, he was always a charming and caring man. Frank was a big fan of motorcycles and active even as a young man, riding and racing on BMX courses in Southern California. On his off time, he would often, in the desert, enjoy his motorcycles with family and friends. He really enjoyed that, and it was his passion. Frank was also into cars and had his own car club, The Fanatics, with best friends Richard Pacheco and Tony Valadares. Frank enjoyed spending time with his grandchildren and took them outdoors whenever he had the opportunity. He is survived by his son Frank Junior and daughter Stacy Avila, who are here with us today, along with his girlfriend. Condolences to his family, friends, and legions of colleagues. He will be greatly missed by all who were lucky enough to know him, and we not only thank him for being a great human being, but also for his service to this great city and for caring deeply about the community where he grew up and what he did for our families and our young ones. His dedication and commitment will not be forgotten. Thank you so much. May he rest in peace.
I'm continuing to look to the left. Are there any more adjourning motions? Again, now to the right. Don't see any members. This meeting's adjourned.
And that's for a number of reasons. The development community is very interested in purchasing agricultural land, because it's usually a little less expensive. Another issue is the residents in adjacent urban areas are often complacent to agricultural conversion. And what we're finding is a lot of the farming members are very interested in the opportunity to sell their land to a developer at the time when they're planning on retiring.
Despite the expansive urbanization, the eight counties of Southern California in two thousand and two generated six billion dollars in agricultural production, and seven out of the eight rank in the state's top twenty agricultural counties. Can the region afford to lose such a vital industry? In Los Angeles County amongst the sprawl, a bounty of agricultural crops are produced, fifteen of which are on the million-dollar list. And for local Southland family farmers needing to sell their produce direct to consumers, seventy-one weekly farmers' markets are held throughout the county, a figure leading the nation. But for how long will this farming prosperity last? In the Antelope Valley of Los Angeles County, where substantial farmland is still under cultivation, a delicate balance between public policy and personal prosperity will ultimately determine the valley's farming fate, because it will be here, in the next twenty years, where history will repeat itself. And like the concerned planners of earlier generations before them, the county planners today, in drafting the two thousand and five General County Plan, support the establishment of agricultural preserves.
The primary goals within the general plan is the preservation of ag land, and that's consistent with state policies. And the state requires that every jurisdiction have a policy similar to that, and we're working toward retaining those agricultural resources. Primarily, we're focused on the Antelope Valley at this point in time, because in the Antelope Valley, where we have most of the agricultural land, the population projections are slated to go from three hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand by two thousand and twenty-five. And in these communities, you primarily have single-family homes that are built. So even though it's an urban area, it's not as dense as it could possibly be. So the expansion is quite vast.